That's the one with the portable bars?
Yeah.
Okay, it looks like everybody's here. Okay, seven o'clock, call the meeting to the order and the budget believing.
The United States of America into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call please, Kelsey.
Bar?
Here.
Jovanini?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Howser?
Here.
Bradshaw?
Here.
Cranford?
Here.
Howard?
Here.
Willie?
Here.
Thank you. Is it the first meeting of the month? We have the meeting of the Civic Center Authority, so I will call that to order. In hearing no business, I will adjourn that meeting. Has everyone had a chance to look over the consent agenda? Are there any questions?
Nope.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, motion by Jamie?
Second.
Second by Barb. Roll call please.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Bar?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Howser?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Cranford?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the regular agenda, item A is approval of the license agreement with Richardson at 1127 North Division Street. I see that Mr. Richardson is here.
If you approve it, I will have to prepare a formal.
Okay. Is there, we had some discussion the other night at Committee of the Hold, is there any other questions that anyone has for Mr. Richardson about the water line and the agreement for a license on the city's property?
I just think it's important to note that this is a license agreement and not a variance, so it's not the same animal.
Correct.
Not a variance, it's not an easement, so if it gets in the way, he has to take it down.
Right.
The only question I had is why are we running on the backside instead of the, by the location on the south side instead of the?
I don't have access on the north side. My property line is directly north and south of the backside of the furthest most east
Anybody else have any other questions? You good, Alan? Do I have a motion of any sort?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Bar, second by Cranford.
To approve?
To approve.
Roll call please.
Howser?
No.
Bradshaw?
No.
Cranford?
Yes.
Howard?
No.
Willie?
No.
Bar?
Yes.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Motion fails.
Do me.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
Uh, yes.
Oh, boy, my first one. I will vote in favor.
Can I voice a question?
Sure.
What would be the reasoning for not allowing a city occupant, myself, to get a water line? Because the only thing that it's going to benefit the city with is further infrastructure on what I want to furthermore do, which is not here yet, and it's only going to bring further tax dollars. Even though that we're in favor, I just had that question because it's, to me, it's kind of bothersome that it could be denied in that manner.
Well, generally, when someone develops property, and I don't know how, I don't remember this was developed a long time ago, but when someone develops property, generally, the developer makes provisions for an easement to get water, sewer, electricity, and somehow or another, this didn't happen.
Okay.
So I don't know whether there might be a better way to do it, if you'd be subdivided or whatever, I'd have to look at it more closely, but I think it's probably because the desperation results from somebody's poor planning before you owned it.
But the question and topic for the committee tonight is, why would it be turned down now from, from some of the committee? I know, I know what was in the past, but meaning-
We say we can have you take it out.
Right.
But I will tell you that when we come to you someday and say we're going to develop that and the water line has to go, you're not going to be happy camper.
Correct, I mean-
And we know that.
He's just questioning the no votes.
Yes.
You guys that voted no can explain or not explain if you see fit, don't have to explain.
Perfectly fine.
I still think you've been a very good neighbor. You haven't been a very good neighbor to the city, for sure, because when we had, when you came in and asked for to do a lot of changes, you might as well have did them anyway.
Did not.
And there's posted signs on property that are right on the line of other people's property, I don't own property, and the city's property, that says no trespassing, and it makes it look like you're controlling the city property.
Mr. Howser, I'm the one that put, I'm the one that put those no trespassing signs up because I also paid for the survey, so I know right where my property lines are. Does the city know where those lines are? I'm, I'm just asking.
How many, how many years has this property been there and not built?
I don't know, I'd have to look at the-
And no one has ever had problems, no one has ever needed to put up signs for any reason.
Correct.
Because the neighbors are always-
I've cleaned up thousands upon-
All took care of each other.
I've cleaned up thousands upon thousands of dollars of trash from prior years, and, but I took responsibility of that, and when you say I haven't-
But that wasn't from the neighbors.
When you say I haven't been a good neighbor, and I know you're referring to your friend who's in front of me, which this isn't nor the time or the place, but since we're addressing the animal, is when I turned him in for EPA for oil leakage? Correct. That's where, that's where you're mad at me about.
I had no idea you did that.
Yes, you did.
I didn't know, I didn't know you did that.
And why would we talk about good neighbors, Mr. Howser?
Well, I, I think, I think we're getting beyond the answer to the question.
Correct.
And if you, you know, if you two want to visit about it later, that's-
And that doesn't mean you can't come up with an alternative plan of some kind and reach for that. And at this point in time, you know, we, and you need, if you got the survey, I'd appreciate that.
Okay.
Because that will help me on my thing, I'll reference the survey.
For the-
Alan will prepare the license agreement.
Written agreement.
For the variance.
For the license.
Written license agreement.
Yes.
I will probably record so it's a matter of record of what the rules are.
Yep.
And, but I just didn't take the time to do that ahead of this meeting, not knowing what the outcome was.
And that's fine. I, I've been kind of-
If you drop that, you know, my office, 207 West Washington, just-
I'll find it.
Right across, back upon the, wouldn't mind dropping that by and then I can use that.
And then about how long?
Next meeting, I would plan to have it by next meeting.
Okay, so I'll need to attend the next meeting and then we'll have the licensing agreement or-
The idea is to get the next license agreement ready by next meeting, then they can just approve it as the form.
Okay.
Make sure they're happy with what I said.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Item C, the ordinance 2025-0012, recreational off-highway vehicles and golf carts.
Excuse me, I'm going to the side.
Oh, I'm sor-, see, I get myself in trouble because I make a check mark when I, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Item B, approval of the facade grant for Miller Addendum 309 North Oak.
So Nate and Rob Miller had approached us a while back prior to this budget year and received a small facade grant to improve the facade facing Oak Street. They came back and there was, there's still money in that facade grant available and sought to do the windows around the building. I took a look and Greg is, Greg has also taken a look at the building, all those windows that they want to do, you can see from either Oak Street or from the Howard Street, you can see a lot of them from there, so you can see all the windows, they're all public viewing. He requested an additional facade grant addendum to this of, his amount is $11,070, which the city's grant amount would be $5,535. It's still, that doesn't put him anywhere near the $50,000 limit, and so being that those windows are all within the requirements of a facade grant, we had a committee of the whole who also recommended that this be passed.
Any questions by anyone?
I'll motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Cranford, second by Lee. Roll call please.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Cranford?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
Bar?
Yes.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Howser?
Yes.
Okay, now we'll move on to the recreational off-highway vehicle and golf cart ordinance.
I can take that, Alan, if you want to correct me.
You're fine, you're fine. It's an amalgamation of effort here.
The, the city was approached about allowing recreational off-highway vehicles. Illinois statute, since we passed our golf cart ordinance, has changed pretty significantly over time. One, one of the things that you'll notice this ordinance does to it, it removes the term low-speed vehicles, that now in the statute, a low-speed vehicle through Illinois, you can, you have to get license plates and register, register a title on it. So they're registered by the state, we don't have to deal with those at all. And so now it deals with off-highway vehicles, and that is 1426.1. The definitions have off-highway motorcycles, golf carts, and recreational off-highway vehicles. And this ordinance proposes to allow golf carts, properly equipped with all of the things that we currently have, turn signals, brakes, windshield that meets ANSI standards, seat belts, and all, and all the positions. And it also includes recreational off-highway vehicles, and those are also defined, if you see on page two, the definition of an off-high, a recreational off-highway vehicle is a motorized off-highway device designed to travel primarily off-highway, and it's got measurements 64 inches in width, having a manufacturer's dry weight of 2,000 pounds or less for gas-powered engines, or 3,000 pounds or less for electric-powered engines traveling on four or more non-highway tires, designed with a non-straddling seat and a steering wheel for steering control. And then we accepted such equipment, such as lawn mowers, go-karts, and other similar vehicles. And the lawn mowers is from the statute, the go-karts, we learned other municipalities that there are some go-karts that meet the weight requirements of that and just didn't really fit what the intent was. So these are, these are your things like your Gators, the Polaris, side-by-side, I'd say, we don't use the term in our ordinance as a side-by-side, but that's what they're commonly known as. And so this ordinance then would allow those to be operated on the street in a similar manner, and on any street where the speed limit is 35 miles an hour or less, and to cross any highway at a four-way stop or a light. In addition to that, the registration on this ordinance has made a little change, golf cart registrations would move to $50, and a recreational off-highway vehicle would be at $100. And then it, the inspections would remain the same. At the police department, they would still go through that process, and still limited to licensed drivers, and all of the graduated driver's license rules would still apply to any of those drivers. Insurance is mandatory, and any, any other vehicles, they have to be operated at all times in accordance with the Illinois Vehicle Code. And so that's pretty much it. We had another section, if you go down further, this amends also Section 4241, we have a section that talks about riding lawn mowers and implements of husbandry, and it also talks about utility vehicles. Well, a lot of those utility vehicles in that section fit the definition of a recreational off-highway vehicle, so we just removed that since those would be registered anyway with the city, and any riding lawn mowers or implements of husbandry still would be allowed to move upon the city streets, were permitted by regulation and during daylight hours from job to job or from place to place for repair, relocation, or for the purpose using the same or its designated intended purpose. It also indicates that it's unlawful to operate a riding lawnmower or implement of husbandry on the streets for recreation or as just a mode of transportation. And then the last, the last thing that this amends is the non-highway vehicles prohibited other than properly equipped golf carts and recreational off-highway vehicles, it just includes off-highway vehicles as provided, no other non-highway vehicles, vehicles may be operated on the roadway, so we exclude motorcycles and anything that you can straddle and that has handlebars, that kind of stuff.
So these side-by-sides, are they required with ANSI windshields and all that too?
They are, yep, they would have all the same requirements that are currently a golf cart has, yep.
That's in 42134, says either has to be. The only thing Jim didn't mention, that after we discussed the last meeting with Dan, we changed the fiscal year for the registration for calendar year instead of March, so everything's a calendar year.
Yeah, and they're, the key with that was for them, was for efficiency, and so, for example, if your first registration is in June, it would be prorated, you'd, from June on to the end of the year, and then every year would be, your registration would be due in January, so that first year would be prorated, prorated. The other thing we talked about, and he also wanted to make clear, was if, if you've already had a vehicle registered and say it comes up to March and you haven't paid yet, you, there's no prorate for that, you're, if it's still the same registration, you got to pay the back month that you didn't, that you didn't pay, so. That, and then one other thing that we're working through as staff is, as, as we know there is a big difference between a golf cart and a recreational off-highway vehicle, we have allowed golf carts on the path that goes to the Recplex off of Division Street, and we've also allowed them into Humiston Riverside Park for the concerts. We're taking a look at that and determining whether that's still our best plan or not, so we, we just want to make sure with the number of vehicles that we're not endangering pedestrian.
Can we put signage up on the path to the Recplex so that pedestrians can have a right of way to the sign? Of course, make sure it's on, would that solve that problem?
Is it common to see a golf course, a golf cart on those paths? I've not seen them.
Very common, there's, there's-
During baseball games, they can go out there and then there's signs that say they can't go beyond a certain limit.
Right.
So they usually go out there and they'll park in the outfield.
But as far as this other vehicle that we're allowing, that would be a no-no.
So, me personally, I think they have the capability of moving too fast.
Yeah, that's a car.
And I, I don't think it would be a wise idea for us to have them out there. Gary, Gary and I will be having some conversations about what we think might be most appropriate.
That's the only way they can get out there.
It is, the only way.
Because Airport Road is not a city road, so they would be on county jurisdiction, which they, they would then be an off-highway vehicle, which are not pro-
Yeah.
Which are prohibited because they have not been allowed by the county.
And even if they were, it's too high a speed limit.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
How would you inform people so that they would know, like, when, like, let's say I buy a golf cart or a side-by-side, do I get like something in writing saying what I can and cannot do?
Yeah, so there is a set of rules that, although, when you register your golf cart, there's a set of rules that lays out where you can go. Like I said, basically, it's, and it's really, you can't be on any state highway, so you can't be on Howard Street, Route 66, or 116, so as you can imagine, the city is kind of cut in half by Route 66, and so if you have a golf cart or an ROHV, then you're limited to this area heading out west, McDonald's is about the farthest you can get to, right? And otherwise, you would, to be legal, you would have to trailer it to the next location, and by the time the road, by the time, there's really not out west many places that you would be able to operate it, so. So it can't be there, and if they, you are, and if they, you are supposed to cross intersection where there's four-way stop or traffic light, right? And other than that, we don't have any roads that are high enough speed within those parameters outside of state highways.
But like, would they know?
But there is a rule sheet.
Not to drive on the sidewalk?
Well-
I know, I, like, I, you could assume that there would be common sense, but-
So we, we, this authorizes them to use the road. Never has a golf cart or an ROHV been authorized to drive on a sidewalk.
Okay, and that's kind of what I was thinking is, you know, we've allowed them out at the, you know, at the van shell, and I thought, you know, I understand kind of why we do that, maybe we need like a little pad where they can sit.
Right. And that's what we're going to discuss, if, if we do allow them, we should have an area where they can come in and out, where they're not coming in at every different angle.
Right, because we wouldn't allow it with cars.
Yeah, and, and so another example too is, you, you notice that golf carts, for example, traveling is kind of common down Vermillion Street, that they'll drive all the way to the right-hand side of the road as cars pass them. The intent of this is that they have the same rights as a vehicle, and they really, it's confusing to drivers if you drive all the way to the right-hand side, you really should drive in your lane the way a car would drive, and, and that can be, I understand that can be frustrating to other drivers, but that's, that's the way, it, it, it's less confusing if you're just driving in a lane and somebody isn't, especially younger drivers aren't trying to make a decision, can I pass them, can I not pass them? And so we, we discuss that with all new registrations, and, and we'll, I'll, I'll talk with the police too to see how often we send out those, that list of rules on where they can go and what they can and can't do, and, and we'll review and make sure that's available always on the website, always on the website.
What about passengers? Is there a limit on passengers?
Is there what?
A limit on passengers?
The passengers, you can only have as many passengers as you have seat belts for the vehicle.
Hey, what about these trailers that I see advertised for towing behind golf carts with seats on them?
Yeah, so this ordinance authorizes a golf cart, we haven't ever authorized you to tow anything on a city street behind a golf cart. And I don't know if we necessarily want it.
Unless it's in the parade.
I mean, maybe if-
We've got three and four-wheel bicycles out there towing trailers.
Are bicycles a completely separate animal?
No, I know.
Yeah.
Maybe sometime in the future, if we, I mean, because we do have so many, I mean, I, they have boating safety classes where there's a lot of boats, maybe we have a golf cart safety class. It's not, you know, the, just optional for people to attend, but, you know, if we start seeing issues. I hope we can come up a solution though to people at the Recplex.
We have 170 some golf carts registered, and quite frankly, we have very, very little problems with them. The, the issues I suggested there of driving over to the right, and periodically you'll see one on Howard Street trying to make a quick cut into Casey's, those are the biggest violations we've had.
Yeah.
And a minor, I think we had a minor crash a while back, but other than that, we, we really just don't get a lot of problems with them, the red, the owners of them are pretty responsible.
They can go straight north and south across Howard, but they can't travel.
That's what I've observed, where people don't go to the four-way stop of the light, will go just across, like I would have my, yeah, they can't do that technically.
Yeah, you need to be at Main Street and Elm Street here to cross Howard Street.
Not just anywhere.
Not just anywhere.
You couldn't do it on Walnut, you'd have to-
Right. We're, we're bound by state law, we're allowed to make our own ordinance to authorize it, but we're still bound by what the state says, so their statute is pretty clear that it has to be a four-way.
They can only cross at Elm or Main.
Yeah. Or Lad Street and go across on Lad.
I didn't know that.
Well, I didn't know if like somebody comes from, maybe they've never done it, but does somebody ever visit Pontiac tourist and have their golf cart on the back of the camper or something and decide to take it around? They might need a map that's colored to show where they could cross.
But they're not licensed?
Without, without our registration.
Right.
I don't know how we handle that, I certainly have seen trailer, things like that, so I don't know how we handle it if we have some, probably just tell them you can't do it.
I mean, and, and there's some, I mean, I, there's some potential business benefits to the ROHVs as well, I mean, you are in a delivery business and- I mean, you are in a delivery business, and that area of town where you can go, it's not a bad method of delivering sales and without having to use a full-size vehicle.
Yep. Anybody else? Any, do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Jason?
I'll second.
Scott, second? Roll call, please.
Cranford?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes. Sorry.
Willie?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Jovanini?
No.
Lee?
Yes.
Howser?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Cranford?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number D, approval of authorization for bids at pickleball courts.
Good evening.
Never did I think this would come before us.
We are finally here.
Oh, you're right. Yeah.
So Farnsworth has prepared a bid package for us, for our pickleball courts, and with your approval tonight, we can get those sent out and they can have those listed and ready to go as early as tomorrow.
Seriously, tomorrow?
Seriously.
You'll have it, you have it in your packet. This is an updated schematic of how the pickleball courts will look. And so, like, like you said, the bid package was ready, and it'll get posted first thing in the morning.
Brian has reviewed all the information, and his, he had a host of questions about the package, and I presume those have been handled by Farnsworth. And as you recall, we have raised almost 50% of the funds in private donations, and then have TIF and ARPA funds available to cover the rest of it, provided we stay within the budget we set like a year ago. Anybody have any questions?
I'll motion to approve.
Okay, Scott, second by Barb. Roll call, please.
Howard?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Howser?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Cranford?
Yes.
Thank you.
While we're on this pickleball subject, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Are we, do we have any plans to put fencing up on the ones down on the south side by the park there?
There's fence on...
There's fence on...
Two sides.
Two sides, but the sides that you need the fence on, there's no fence.
Yep.
So the ball just flies across the park and goes in the bushes and you gotta, you gotta breathe to be able to...
I would guess nobody will play on those courts after these are done, but...
There's a lot of people playing them.
Oh, yeah, I know.
I could hear the vibration.
Yeah.
So the quick answer to that is we did not budget any of that, right? At this time, right? At this time, but it's worth making a note for us to take a look at.
Mm-hmm.
Future.
Thank you, everybody. That's a project I've been working on for almost two years, and the pickleballers are gonna be thrilled to death, provided the bids come back like we want them to. Item number E, approval of the 2025 HMA bid, and I believe Brian is here to talk about that.
On Tuesday, the 27th of May, we opened bids for our 2025 HMA maintenance program. We had two bidders. KVCC was our low bidder at $1,232,574.68. That was within our budget of $1.41 million. You may recall that this is overlay primarily on Mill Street from Torrance up to Water Street, including expansion joints on the Mill Street Bridge, and then Mill Street out here in between the Public Safety Complex and City Hall, Boulder Drive and Apache in Illini Subdivision, and Livingston Street back behind City Hall. So, a decent amount of work for this year, bigger program than we normally have, thanks to our one-cent sales tax this year, and motor fuel tax, and rebuild Illinois funds. So it's a multi-fund source project.
Does anyone have any questions for Brian?
I make a motion to approve the bid with hanging fees.
Motion by Barb.
Second.
Second by Jerry. I have a question. Since it came in under bid, is there a way for us to tack on anything near any of these that they might be willing to do that would, that would spend that money?
It, it's possible. There's a couple of things that I would caution about. One is, we don't always know what we get into.
Sure.
So there, there have been instances in the past where we made reasonable assumptions that our thickness of pavement was adequate, that we could take two inches of, of surface off, and we found that two inches was all we had. So in that case, we put four inches back, because four inches is really a minimum thickness for asphalt. So, we don't know what we're gonna get into in all, in all these cases. The other thing that I would say is that we haven't put out our concrete program yet, and so, always a possibility, though. Always a possibility. And, and we watch that as we go through the project and see where we are and see what's coming up, so we'll see, we'll see if we can or not.
We'll end up spending it some time, some time. We have plenty of... Okay. Roll call, please, Kelsey.
Willie?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Howser?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Cranford?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
One other question, Brian, and now I'm gonna, do we, do we have an, does the bid have an end date on it? Like, will we, are we assured that all this work will be completed in this year?
The bid has a working day on it. So just, I believe, my recollection is that it's got 65 working days. Those working days are Monday through Friday, May 1st to November 30th, exclusive of Monday and Tuesday. So, and in the general conditions of the contract, there's plus or minus 30 days to have the contract signed, and then 10 days after the signing of the contract by both parties, when working days will start. So, there are...
Okay. But in all likelihood, it will be done this year. We hope.
Yeah.
Okay. Item F, the downtown pavement striping, and I believe really we're here just to discuss, we talked about the downtown striping at our committee of the whole last week, and the need to have that done, and the general consensus that night with, that we would go ahead and plan for it. I believe we just need confirmation that you want to direct Brian, when his time permits, to work on that project, so that when it is completed in the priority that he has other items, we would be able to go out to bid. Am I correct on that?
Yes.
Okay. So, any discussion, any more questions about that?
No, I thought we were pretty solid on that.
Okay, okay. I think we just needed the confirmation publicly that, so do I, should we, should we take a motion on that? Okay. Motion by Jamie, second by Jerry. To proceed with the, and, and for the, the public, it's to bring our downtown parking striping in compliance with ADA regulations and various pedestrian IDOT, various pedestrian safety measures that we need to have done, and so we decided to pursue a public contract for that, because it's a pretty big job.
Some are, some are not big enough, and some of them are too close to cur, to intersections, so, and it's been a while since that whole striping has been done.
I know, I know, I've been around just long enough to have heard that conversation every year from various people in town about, especially parking where too close to the stop signs.
Sightlines.
Yeah.
Okay, roll call, please, Kelsey.
Barr?
Yes.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Howser?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Cranford?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, item G, introduction of our new building maintenance position, filler.
Yes, so after, after a search that I have, Chris and I have gotten together and asked Jason Lee to take that position that is currently occupied by Rick Rambo, and he has said yes, and so we're, we're thrilled to replace that assistant superintendent street, I mean, building maintenance position. And the memo says the start, the start date has not yet been confirmed, but that is going to be the 16th of June, so by all accounts, this would also be...
This is last meeting.
Yes, Alderman Lee's last meeting.
Goodbye, partner.
We have a huge hole in this council.
Right, I got work to do.
We have a huge hole.
Yes.
And I'm working it, but I'm not getting anywhere.
Agreed to anymore.
Congratulations.
Yeah, right. Well, welcome, in another manner.
Congratulations, Seth.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, mayor's comments. I have a list of notes here. First off, I just want to report to everybody, one of my things that I want to do is spend a day with every department head at some point, hopefully within the next couple, three months, just to get a feel for what their job entails, because sometimes maybe we think we all know what they're doing, and not that they're doing what they're not supposed to be, but just that there's a lot of things that we, that would help us make better decisions. So last Thursday, I spent a good part of the day with Chris. He was my first victim, and it was a great day. I mean, I, I had an opportunity to ask him a lot of questions as we were riding around. I mean, he hit a host of things that he had to do that day. It was, you know, it's, it's everything. He, he just, he's the jack of all trades. I got a tour of the maintenance facility, which maybe sometime we would plan that, because, you know, there's a lot going on out there. So it was really a good day. We spitballed some ideas that I had, some that he had, but he didn't know anybody else would ever think about having them, and one in particular, I hope we'll, we're gonna work on and share later. But I think the biggest thing that I learned is, maybe before we make some decisions and ask things to be done, we really need a better, a better picture of the long-term implofic, implofic, you know what I mean? Because we're maybe asking them to add to their plate that they already have full, and it's hard to get all the work done that already has to be done without, you know, with a limited group of people. So, I guess we just, you know, prioritizing that. And, you know, Chris never complains about anything, so he's gonna do whatever we ask. But one of the things that we went and did, we went out to the Recplex, and, I mean, there was, there's a lot of action going out, on, out there pretty much every day now because of baseball and softball, and I'm out there about four nights a week with my grandkids, so I've been really keeping my eye on what we may need happening out there. And I had had several parents come forth to me last summer and again this year about the parking on the roadway and really a, a big pedestrian safety issue. Cars were parking right on top of the sidewalk and sightlines. I mean, if a car, if a kid, a two-year-old could run out in the road anyway, so I had asked Chris and Gary, we met one day, and to plan for a, a crosswalk and improvements in the, so they were doing it Thursday, so we got to go out, and I'm not kidding you, it's, it's a huge improvement. Thank you, Gary, and to Chris for getting it done so fast, because now the cars, and the nighttime person, Jim Legg, is usually the guy there, and he's trying, I mean, he's on the microphone, he's announcing to cars that are improperly parked and asking them to move, and he once even asked me Saturday if I would get some little cards made to put on windshields, if you guys are okay with that, just to remind people, you know, you shouldn't be parking here. So anyway, that was one thing that we did on the ride, but just, as always, thank Chris and his crew, because everybody's asking them to do stuff. I had talked the other day about the social district, Misty has put together some ideas, and I don't, I wanted to just ask, should we take that to committee with the, the things that she has, or keep moving forward and just bring it back to council? I'm, I'm okay either way. She sent me an email today with kind of a start of some parameters for us, and I haven't even, other than she and I talked, so any...
If we all get emails, heads-up emails on what the plan is, that's fine.
Okay. Is everybody good with that? Okay, we'll just keep moving.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yes.
The, the food truck regulations that we talked about last week at, in one committee, we didn't really, do we want to pursue having parameters so that if we get asked by trucks and/or when we have trucks that come into town, isn't it behoove us? Jim has been kind of working on putting, you know, checking other communities to see, but are we okay to keep moving on with that? Again, same thing, bring it back.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, I think we also make a priority of trying to get those restaurants filled downtown.
Right.
But that certainly is a necessary...
We need to discuss a way to get people who want to run food trucks to want to be brick-and-mortar here. They've been to other towns, they see what we've got, you know, they should have some sort of, there should be, should have some sort of progression that follows that, or they can just do special events.
Well, and that can be part, yeah. Yeah.
Would that go to a committee?
Well, that's what, you know, once we, once he gets that done, then we would take it to committee. And just for information, July 30th is the date set for the public meeting to provide the results of our community housing assessment. There'll be more coming out with that, but just so everybody knows, that's the day of that.
Do you know what, you don't know what time?
I believe it's gonna be from 5:00 to 7:00, or 5:00 until when she's done with the presentation. And then just one kind of, another question, I've had several of you ask about having a return to the department heads being at council meetings. Is that something that we, that everybody likes, not like, doesn't care? I, I just, I don't want to ask that to be the case if, that, you know, if nobody really has a strong feeling, but I've had more than one of you ask on separate occasions, so...
Well, I guess you were face-to-face at least twice.
Or if somebody has a question, too, you know, and you can look right at them and find the answer.
I mean, we've had that, where, we've had a, a question where we've had to rely on Jim, and it'd been nice to get, you know, the department head to give us a little more. I mean, he's brilliant, but...
Yeah, but if we have something on the meeting, like tonight, you guys are here, and we've, I kind of feel different. I think they got enough on their plates already. I think that we've done a good job having the people here. Like, I can't really think of a time that we had something come up where there wasn't somebody here who could answer the question.
Okay, well, we'll talk. That's all I have.
Maybe we should get consensus from the, from the staff.
Yeah.
As to what it means to them, you know, some...
Sure.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, they might enjoy their time off.
Well, that's...
Well, I'm taking the load off of Jim is what I'm talking about. Every question goes to him, and then he has to go ask them, and then there's a time-consuming thing that goes involved, and even if you go to the office, you gotta talk to him.
I mean, I will tell you, where that whole idea came from was me. When I came here, was because I asked these guys to do a lot of stuff during the week, and if, if they didn't have anything on the agenda, I'm like, why take their night away?
Mm-hmm.
And I don't want to step on your toes.
No, it's, it's okay.
Yeah.
Don't beat me, they'll beat me.
I like seeing them here, that if there's a question, it can be answered immediately by them, instead of going like two different, go to Jim and then to them. So, that's just my input.
Maybe ask them.
City council comments.
I have one. I received a call over the weekend about bicycles and, well, it was a conversation, they had a couple different things in it, but one of the topics was bikes, and there's a lot of kids riding bikes around town. Kids don't necessarily know the rules as far as when they should be on a sidewalk and when they shouldn't. I think that age comes into play there, too. I don't know the rules, and I'm not a kid, so like, I don't know the rules. Some time ago, there was a bicycle safety class that was put on by the police department. Something like that might be helpful, but it's voluntary and you're reaching a small portion of kids. But there's a lot of kids on bikes out there that don't really know how to keep themselves safe or to keep other people safe and not, you know, I know my door downtown is kind of recessed. I've almost been taken out by people on bikes before on the sidewalk when I step out, because I don't see them. I step out, because I don't see them. Maybe, one of the things that we talked about brainstorming was maybe put something as far as, you know, on the water bill, talking about bicycle safety, be having a bicycle safety class, maybe working with the schools to have something done in the school. I know that at the end of the summer, kids aren't really riding bikes as much, but I do think that we should maybe try to get some information out there on the rules for bike riding, and especially for different age groups.
Yeah, I had that similar conversation, probably the same person, but bicycles aren't allowed on sidewalks, period, unless they're like kids, little kids, they, they can do that, but bikes, and then they're supposed to be, just like our golf carts, with the rules of the road, ride with the traffic, not against the traffic, stop at the stop signs, all those kinds of things, and, you know, we were talking about the golf cor, carts and whatnot, and perhaps having a informational training volunteer thing, tie that in with cycling, bicycling, would be a, you know, once-a-year thing or something.
And we also have a lighted digital sign right outside on Howard Street, that we can put little clips up there every couple hours, that would just say, "Do you know that when you ride a bicycle, you need to do this?"
Yeah.
Things like that could be taught in town, just for people, you have to see it, you can't not see it.
I prosecuted a few of those kids, particularly on the downtown side of the city.
Really?
When Jim was chief, they tend, they're not the little kids alone.
Right, right, the junior high kids.
They're the kids that are, know better, and-
The ones that run up to the stop sign when they see a car coming and stop, like, act like they're going to run across.
And I think, I remember one of them, we actually had a, had a car going by the alley by, where First Financial's alley is, or something, so it has the doors coming out as an impact, but they know the rules, the people we're talking about, they just don't care. And when you're dealing with prosecuting people for violating those rules, when they're underage, and it's ordinance violation, it becomes very difficult. And we worked with a lot of different ways, Jim Melvin volunteered his services to host the kids for Saturday in the cemetery, mowing weeds and stuff.
That's a polite way of putting it.
And we did, we did learn that the second time they got a ticket, the parents paid to find where they wanted to go to. It was, the only learning experience was the parents bought their way out. And it is a real challenge to enforce rules with young people, because this doesn't rise to the level of juvenile delinquency, where you get them into the system, but you just want to educate them.
But why would it be the second time?
It is, I mean, I rode on the, I suppose I rode on the sidewalks when I was delivering beaters as a kid, you know, that's easier to hit the porch from the sidewalk than it is from the street, and stuff like that, but, you know, the bottom line is, you have to be creative. I kind of think, you know, the schools have a day where they have a complication or whatever, and talk about bike safety. We used to have a bike, I don't know, they still might have a thing where you put on your bike, registration or something, so if somebody steals your bike, you can find who it is, basically, but there's no real enforcement.
I don't have one on a bike.
I don't know how you, how you get to, but it, it is, it is a problem.
Yeah, I know.
I said, I don't have one on my bike. And Jim's like, oh, you're in violation, so, oh, is that all it is? Okay. Well, it's not because I don't want to pay for it.
The times I've seen kids on North Street, crossing Main, without even looking, and there's always cars on the street.
Right.
And you think, what happens when they get hit? Who's at fault? The driver of the car, because they-
In a really ideal world, if we had an extra staff person at the police department, you know, just community policing days, where, you know-
Or don't when you do touch a truck.
Where, where there's, or just maybe where they're randomly downtown for an afternoon watching and observing, and just reminding people, not, you know, just, just, you know.
Don't be the fun police, just say-
Yeah.
No whistles and lights flashing.
Right.
I miss the bicycle police used to have.
We do not.
Ever since they got hurt.
And we don't have staff.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we understand what happened, but that, that's when they had a lot of contacts downtown.
I know.
When they were actually had a presence.
Well, maybe, maybe at some point, I'm going to be doing a route around the business owners. I mean, really, the, the business owners would just remind people if they see them, you know, anybody who's downtown has the-
Yeah, I've told kids to get off the sidewalk.
Yeah.
I mean, if they could even put a sticker in the window of the store.
Right, it's all about the delivery of how you kindly remind people, so, good point.
Call their mom.
Yeah.
Where it starts.
It is, it's where it starts.
Whether you know it or not, yell at them, "We know your mother."
Yeah.
So, I have something, I see, I see Carol's here today.
Yes.
Carol?
Carol's here.
Carol, I see you're here. Sometime ago, we've talked about, you know, we've, we've shut down some bank accounts, we, we've put things in with one bank, and we're looking at addressing some investment portfolios and things, and you're working on that, I know, you gave a report the while. Are we doing any more, better?
We're, we seem to be doing even more investing, and we go for a term, because that seems to be a higher rate, and we're getting one, like, two, five, average, I said all the time we do this month.
Nice.
Try to ladder a little bit, so that you can do, you have to do a little bit of challenge, or, or, I think, I think it's gone well.
What brought that to my, to me, I'm also on another board for another group, and they did essentially what we did, closed down some bank, they had money stretched all over the place, and, and, you know, you're getting point oh one percent on your interest, and they ultimately went to a broker fiduciary, like Edward Jones, and they came back with an entire program that allowed them to, you know, you know, have liquid money, have semi-liquid money, and then have some investments that made some money, and even though the markets, and, and I think their, their program is balanced towards, I was going to say balanced towards growth, but it's not that, it's balanced, it's a little less aggressive, less, it's more bonds than anything else, than, than, than stuff like that, and I wondered if we could look at something like that, perhaps, if that would help you with having, you know, someone look at that.
I think the, I think Lauterback has-
Lauterback doing that?
So, recommendations to reach him, possibly.
Avoiding commissions is typically a good thing, because you can make money by getting higher rates or lower costs.
Yeah.
Today's world with, I don't know if we're doing any treasury checks or whatever, but it's really easy to access the same as professionals.
Well, and the state has a program too, if we, I mean, we could potentially get into that, where we have, we manage it essentially, but they, they have the clearinghouse, so to speak, so.
The more you make on the float, the better it is.
Exactly, yep.
We're at a point where we're, we're really just, our funds are sitting at operational levels, everything else is invested.
And I think last year, we had gold, three gold, we made three hundred thousand, that edge has been sitting there.
Good job.
I think we're, we're moving forward with that, pretty well, yeah. Anybody else? Frank's alarm. Okay, public comment, anybody? Oh, I'm sorry, Jim. I really can't, I can't, I can't get it together.
I just have a couple. First, I, I wanted to thank Brian, he's, he's, he's done a lot of work with this new expanded one percent sales tax, and getting out our HMAs, and we have proof that a project can come under budget.
Yeah, awesome.
But it, it really is a lot of work on the engineer to get those, and he's also being pulled into every sewer issue we have, and, you know, so he has a lot going on, and Gary, my two thanks are for him as well, putting together this pickleball program has been a long time coming, as well as with the parks, working the golf course, and, you know, we have the splash pad, and so there's a couple things that still need to happen there, but Splash Pad's open and operational, and, and, and he's actually identified some things I think that's going to improve it, and I think if you've been down there, the water looks like it's shooting out a little better.
It does.
The valves have been, they've done some things, and the valves are really working good. Another piece of news that I, that I've learned is, and, is that the Bob Keenan's building that DeLong's was in has been leased, and that will be a restaurant as well.
Nice, nice.
And so that should be coming soon. Social district, we're talking about that, if you want, and a good example of kind of the way we're looking, is Cary, Illinois. If you Google Cary, Illinois, social district, it's pretty close to the ideas of what we're looking at, so, but I wanted to also indicate, one of the things we're working on over at DeLong's is a license agreement for the outdoor patio for that building, and where we would, we would own the furniture out there, so it's usable by us on off-hours, all of, all of that, and then have a license agreement with the lieutenant to utilize that outdoor cafe, so. That is a, a good tip incentive to really get that area pumping and moving.
Excellent.
That'll come back, that'll come back before we-
Who was it?
He didn't, he didn't tell us who it was. Do we know when they're hoping to get open?
He's hoping July.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't know if he's ready to announce who it is.
It's good news.
It's very good news.
Yep.
Yeah, Gary's, Gary's my ride-along victim on Wednesday.
Last couple of things, the mayor's mentioned the vacancies on the council, just as a reminder to the public, if you're in Ward Two, and now Ward Three, and you're interested in serving on the council, get ahold of the mayor, but some of the resources we have are on our website, and if you go into the city's website, or just Google, it's probably easier to Google Pontiac, Illinois Ward map, and there's an interactive map that you can put in your address, and it'll tell you what ward you're in, and it'll, and let you know, and just, my own two cents is that it's nothing, I, I don't think anyone should fear if they're interested in taking a look at sitting on the council, there isn't anything to fear about it, that I don't think you should feel like you'd be overwhelmed or not qualified enough, so, I think it's worth looking at too. June, extremely busy month for the city, I think if you're a resident or a visitor, and say you can't find something to do in Pontiac, you're not in Pontiac, because this month is going to be so busy with Farmer's Market, with Rockin' at the River starting, cruise nights, there's so many things going on downtown, it's going to be a great month, so that's another one, you can find out all those events at pontiac.org, and the community calendar, and, as well as visit pontiac.org, if you're so inclined, go across the street and look at that visitor kiosk, and go to visit pontiac.org that way. That's all I have.
Any date on the parking lot commencement?
Out here?
Yeah.
That's a Brian question.
Okay.
Technically, they have started.
Oh, okay.
The work here in the intersection is storm sewer.
Right. Okay, thank you. Okay, now, public comment. Anna?
I have one.
State your name and address for Kelsey, please, or-
My name and address?
She, Kelsey needs it.
Okay.
Sherry probably already always knew it.
You can bet that, Mike.
Anna Horner, and I live at 621 West Lincoln Street. So, I just wanted to give an update for last night, we had our meeting, our monthly meeting tonight, actually, before this, and we've been meeting on a regular monthly basis, we've got some fundraising in plan for the summer months, we're going to do mocktails at city-sponsored events, so like the Farmer's Markets, the Cruise Nights, Rockin' at the River, possibly the municipal band concerts, and then we're going to sell those mocktails for like five bucks each, and then all of that will go towards last night. The mocktails went over really well at the Spring Market, so we decided to kind of carry that over into the summer city events. The carnival was a really huge bolster to our coffers this year, so we're hoping that we can misuse trying to get them back for like sometime before school, to try and get them back and do that again. We are also working diligently towards other avenues for fundraising, and we are really excited about the layout of the event, and all of the different entertainment that we have planned, so I've booked Three Horse Rodeo Band, and they're gonna, they've got a huge following, so really excited about the people that they're going to pull for that, and then I also booked the Riker Maneuver, and Joy's Cocoa Shack, she's going to do some cocoa, we're going to have cocoa and s'mores down by the ice rink, I booked a hypnotist from Chicago, Mr. Vibe, and he's going to be at the Eagle Theater, and we've got a horse and carriage, Mr. Wolford knows a guy, so he knows a magician, and we're going to get a magician, he's going to be at the house, and, so we're like six months out, and we're really excited to bring back this event, and kick off the Centennial for Route 66 with a bang, so.
That's nice. This is all marketplace stuff, this is all related to-
Main Street, I mean.
It's a, it's all, all funding is coming through the city-
Excellent.
And it's Illinois Main, it's Pontiac Main Street program.
Yep, so, really excited, and I'm always looking for volunteers, so if anybody wants to volunteer, just get ahold of me. Thank you.
Is that it?
Thank you.
Okay, with no further business, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Jason? Second by John? Okay, thank you, everybody.